Nine o'clock, we're gonna start the meeting. We just remind you, we are Randy's just fired up the live streaming here, so just a word of warning. Anyway. First. We'll start with a moment of reflection. Thank you. Okay, you can make your disclosure of the kind of area of interest now or at any point in time through the meeting. And if I could have a motion, we don't have any alterations to the agenda. Just checking, so if I could have a motion to confirm the agenda of May twentieth, that would be great. Move by Councilor Callum, second by Councilor Willhout. Those in favor? Carrie. Okay, moving on here, we're gonna go to consent agenda. And we have. Items five point one to five point one and the May sixth two thousand and twenty one council minutes. Does anyone wish to see anything pulled from the consent agenda? Councilor McDermott.
Uh, yeah, would uh, would you like us to support five point eleven? Western Wardens, would you like our support on that?
Uh, certainly wouldn't hurt. I don't think they're specifically looking for that because they've already done it as all the. Counties in the region, but if we wanted to send along a further letter, that would be great. Because that is.
Might as well.
Okay, so five point one one, anyone else want to see anything pulled? Councilor Willhout.
My point two, I'd like to support that, and I think that's important. Perth County support to crisis center. Ninety eight.
Okay, uh, yeah, and if you didn't bring that one up, I was gonna point that one out. Okay, do you want to move that down further, or would you just rather discuss them right now and then receive them?
Do now.
Okay, we're gonna do it now, five point one one, the line five resolution. You're willing to send a letter of support to that?
I would move that.
Okay, Councilor McDermott's gonna move it. Do I have a seconder? That would be Councilor McKenzie. Those in favor of that? Carrie unanimously. And five point two, that's the city of Barry, the National Three-Digit Suicide and Crisis Hotline. And what they're proposing is a three-digit number. Instead of a ten-digit number that most people couldn't get their hands on anyway. In uh, in a state of crisis, I'm thinking the three-digit would be the way to go. So does somebody want to move that we support that? Councilor Casenberg, second by Councilor Willhout. Those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Perfect. So we will the resolution for the nine eight eight. I know originally went to Patty Haydo, the federal minister and some people. I would like to see to go to John Nader, our local MP. Five point two.
Oh, okay.
And perhaps if we sent it to our provincial minister of health as well. And anybody else that you feel that may have some influence on that.
Alrighty.
Perfect. Okay, so having done that, I have a motion that council receives consent agenda items five point one to five point one one. And approves the May sixth two thousand and twenty one council minutes. Move by. Councilor Willhout, second by Councilor McDermott. Last chance for questions or polling. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on. We are now at public meetings, hearings and delegations. And we have the community safety wellbeing plan. And I believe Kim McElroy. Chief Skinner. And. Doug Exner, I don't see his name up there now, but. Anyway, we could get those on.
Officer Cinco.
Cinco, that's it. There's Kim. And I got Greg over in the corner, or did have Greg, oh, there's Officer Cinco, there's.
There I am, Warden.
There's the Greg. Skinner, and uh, there's David Cinco, so we're good. Okay, so I'll let you three people take it away. Not sure who's starting or doing what portions, but I'll let you take charge.
Thank you, Warden. I'll just wait for uh, Janine Fast to queue up our PowerPoint. And uh, we'll get the presentation underway. Okay, good morning, Warden and members of county council. Thank you for giving us some time on your agenda today. To present to you the final version of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan for the Perth County Partnership Municipalities and Councils. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Greg Skinner, the Chief of Police of the Stratford Police Service. And joining me as part of this presentation team are Kim McElroy, Director of Social Services for Stratford, Perth County and St. Mary's. Acting Inspector Dave Cinco, Detachment Commander for Perth County OPP. Tracy Farmer, Lead Consultant on this project from DPRA Consultants. And Janine Fast, Housing Stability Policy and Program Coordinator with Social Services. I hope you've all had some time to review the documents that we provided in advance, but if not, I hope that our review today provides you with the information you need. To inform you of the strategic direction in place for the lower tier municipalities in Perth County. With respect to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. The intention of today's presentation is to briefly provide you with a broad overview of the why and how of the legislative requirement. For each municipality to have a community safety and wellbeing plan and the extensive public and stakeholder consultations. That inform the consultants to identify the priority areas, determine the goals and objectives. At a high level, and then look at our next steps as we implement the plan. Items four and five is where we will be focusing today. And now to talk about the background, I'll turn it over to Inspector Cinco.
Good morning, everyone. Each municipality is required through legislation to have a community safety and wellbeing plan approved and adopted by July first, two thousand and twenty one. I have been impressed with the cooperation at the municipal government level as all six municipalities in Perth County. Partnered to commit to one plan. That is no easy task at the best of times, but Tracy and her team at DPRA. Were able to very professionally navigate the challenges presented by a global pandemic. To produce a document that recognizes the similarities and the differences. Among the communities represented by the car partner municipalities. And build in the flexibility in the plan that can meet the diversity of needs across the county. The purpose of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan is not to recreate the wheel. Each of your municipalities individually and collectively have incredible people performing amazing work to support your communities. The purpose of this plan is to be the overarching plan that coordinates those activities happening now. Leverages existing resources, shares best practices and identifies and addresses any gaps in service delivery. We live in a fast-paced world where issues come at us from all directions. And it is easy to get pulled into the weeds and get stuck in paralysis by analysis. The intent of this plan is to provide a strategic coordinated effort. Where complex community issues are addressed holistically. Ensuring that resources are provided effectively, efficiently and consistently. With the community knowing that resources are available. How to access them and what services they can expect to be provided. Well, this graphic demonstrates the four levels of intervention to community. Incident response is expensive, and that is where resources like police, fire. Ambulance, social services, hospitals and emergency rooms. Are required to deal with people in potential crisis situations. This plan focuses primarily on the other three levels in order to reduce the calls for service and reduce the risk to our communities. The more initiatives that we can implement that are focused on social development, prevention and risk intervention. The greater impact we can have on our communities. Some examples of programs that have had a very positive impact include the mobile crisis rapid response team model. We're taking the services to the street and to the people who need them, but struggle to access them. Are served better and as and result in less in the way of expensive incident response. And now I'll turn it over to Kim to discuss how we created the roadmap.
Good morning, everyone. Stakeholders listed above provided DPRA their advice, guidance and local experience in developing the research and survey tools to ensure the right organizations and. Individuals were contacted to contribute to this plan. The advisory committees meetings provided the opportunity for the leadership positions who have the ability to make decisions. And are authorized to allocate resources, including funding from existing budgets to come together for common purpose. It is this structure at the senior leadership level that will model the participation of the action groups to inform the executive leadership team. This plan is guided by the following set of principles, respect, equity, collaboration, inclusion, commitment and compassion. As you can appreciate, there is a lot of existing information that needed to be reviewed to ensure that the goals and objectives of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan aligned with the existing strategic plans of your municipalities. And supported the goals that we want to achieve, you want to achieve as council. All of the information obtained from the research, research and consultations were built into this plan. Stakeholder engagement is the key to this plan being successfully accepted by our communities to address the diverse needs of each of our municipalities. The next few slides provide an overview of the efforts that we're that we're used to reach out to the community and provide them an opportunity to participate. So they could have their input into priorities, objectives and goals of this plan. A comprehensive online survey was conducted. Significant efforts being made to get the public to complete the surveys. In the end, one thousand and seventy eight surveys were completed with the proportion by each municipality outlined. In addition to the surveys, a number of facilitated discussions and one-on-one interviews for help. A total of ninety one people participated in these sessions. One of the stakeholder engagement session focused on those with lived experiences. I think we all recognize then that we will that until we've walked a mile in another person's shoes, we really don't know what challenges they have faced along the way. Those with lived experiences have a unique perspective. One that the consultants went to great lengths to ensure was included in the engagement process. Because if we don't know our consumer, then the delivery of the service won't meet the needs. Whether that is delivery of programs for seniors, programs for youth. Or support from those suffering from mental health and addiction issues. These engagement sessions did not take places originally planned. As the work plan for the project predated the pandemic. Workarounds then had to be implemented. Regardless, because of consistent messaging we heard throughout the engagement process. We are confident that the priorities identified will have the most positive impact on our communities. And that, and now I will pass it to Chief Skinner, who will chair the consultation findings.
So what did we hear from those consultations? We heard that. For all residents to feel safe and physically, mentally and spiritually healthy, their basic needs must be met. We heard that safety and wellbeing means residents feel they belong, they are welcome, they are respected, and they are connected to others in the community. We heard there are vulnerable individuals and families in our communities who need additional help to enhance the quality of their lives. We heard there are many excellent social, health and recreation and leisure programs and services available. To residents in and across the six partner municipalities. And we heard that not all residents are able to access those services and supports they need when they need them, where they need them. The survey responses for all of the communities indicated that the access to healthcare services was the number one priority to support community safety and wellbeing. Stratford and St. Mary's both had adequate and affordable housing as their number two priority. While Northwest and South Perth respondents identified other community securities and safety as their number two priority. This catch-all includes police visibility and enforcement strategies as a deterrent to criminal activity and traffic-related issues. Perth East respondents identified recreational activity opportunities as their number two priority. This plan takes into account the similarities and differences in these identified priorities. Enabling each municipality to put programs and services in place to meet their specific communities' needs. The facilitated focus groups and one-on-one discussions identified similar priorities, but in more detail, as you'll see in the slide above with the nine priorities listed. As we said earlier in the presentation. The intent of the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan is to leverage the great work. Already being done and support the implementation of programs on a go-forward that address any gaps in the service delivery. We identified some of the ongoing committees and initiatives that are in place supporting some of the priorities identified. Which this plan will rely on to inform our future coordinated efforts. I'll now turn it over to Inspector Cinco, who will review the four priority areas of the plan.
All of the research, consultations with stakeholders and engagement with the public culminated in the identification of four priority areas. That will focus the work and contributions to community safety and wellbeing. Priority area number one, we've titled systems planning and integration. With the first goal being to improve knowledge of and access to programs, services, supports and resources. What became apparent during the engagement sessions, what that was that people either didn't know what programs were available in their community. Or how to access the programs that did exist. More creative and persistent communication initiatives will better position people to access and utilize the supports already in place. And better identify any gaps. Goal number two under this priority is focused on police visibility. And more subject matter experts on patrol or readily accessible to police. As a deterrent to negative behavior in our communities. And of course, major event planning and preparedness was identified in response to the efforts being put in place to keep our community safe and healthy during this global pandemic. Priority area number two is adequate, affordable and attainable housing. The goal of this area is to increase the availability and accessibility of affordable, safe and suitable housing. By supporting the strategic objectives of our areas updated housing and homelessness plan. Priority area number three is affordable and accessible health, social and recreation services. Goals include improving the availability and accessibility to healthcare services. By supporting healthcare partners in their work and improving knowledge and awareness of crisis response triage options. And the third goal under this priority area is to increase the availability of affordable transportation options. And support the efforts that are currently underway. Priority area number four, social inclusion. Goals include increasing the application of equity, diversity and inclusion practices across all partner agencies. And promote understanding of the diverse groups and populations that live in our communities. And the final goal under this area is to enhance our resident sense of community belonging. By creating and maintaining safe and welcoming public spaces and increasing access to community events and activities for everyone. And at this time, I'll pass it back to Kim to share what happens next.
So on Monday and Tuesday night, we presented to your councils that adopted the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. And the next step will be the implementation. One of the things that I've consistently heard when dealing with members of the public. Is that we may be aware of the issues plaguing the communities, but no one is doing anything about it. And some with lived experience feel that nobody cares about them. Nothing can be further from the truth or the reality, but it speaks to the need for more communication. A big part of the initial phase of the implementation will be a comprehensive communication strategy to inform rollout of the plan to the public. Provide ongoing updates of enhancements being made by our collective service delivery efforts. To demonstrate to the public that this plan is not sitting on a shelf. The public has high expectations of its politicians and municipal employees. In order to maintain trust and support from our constituents, we need to do a better job of letting the public know what we are doing. What we hope to achieve and how they can be part of this solution. Slide twenty eight speaks to the strategic engagement approach to our Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. It recognizes the strengths that already exists within and across municipalities and organizations. It enhances effectiveness by creating more strategically aligned and formalized alliances. And it helps to improve integration, enhance capacity, reduce duplication and promote coordination and collaboration. The Community Safety and Wellbeing Plans are meant to bring those with individual. The Community Safety and Wellbeing Plans are meant to bring those with individual mandates together to partner. Together as partners to find new creative ways to deal with local issues and explore options. The concept of team facilitates the potential for the whole to be greater than the sum of its parts. Coordination of resources, sharing of information, integrated approach to problem solving, less duplication. And greater efficiencies are all benefits of collaboration. And the community as a whole benefits when organizational leaders can model the way by thinking beyond their own mandates. And how decisions they make affect the environments of others. The governance structure to provide guidance, direction and oversight of the plan. Has been the subject to significant discussions. For the implementation of the plan, the decision has been made to delineate the executive leadership as those who are legislatively bound to have this plan in place. And have participated as a funding partner to create the plan, thus having broad responsibilities for their individual community and safety and wellbeing. So each of the partner municipalities will have a seat at the executive leadership table with the police and social services participating as co-chairs. And resources to the executive leadership team. The voting rights are reserved for the representatives of the municipality. The key stakeholders committee consists of the leadership of those existing agencies and organizations whose mandates are aligned with the goals and objectives of the plan. The action groups is where the heavy lifting will take place and there's flexibility to align the action groups based on geography, priority or already existing committees. The plan will then leverage existing committees. And the first implementation step for the plan will be to conduct an inventory of the existing committees in Perth County. Review their mandates and the programs that they currently have in place. We will then begin the process of bringing the leadership from like-minded action groups together for greater clarity on what exists currently. And how those committees are interacting currently. The responsibility of the partnership council will be to implement the plan, identify linkages between programs and services and enhance coordination among and between municipalities and service providers. It will be the responsibility of the partnership council to determine how frequently to report back to the individual municipal councils. Determine the annual budget allocations that will go before each council and to provide operational support to the plan. Partnership council will have the final decision-making over the structure of this plan. We anticipate there will be a report back expectation to the Ministry Solicitor General. Ministry Solicitor General, although this has not been clarified yet. And the partnership council will have that responsibility as well. The action groups will be the conduit of this of the plan to the community. These groups will be the backbone of the plan and will provide the means where the creative innovation and problem-solving acumen will have the most impact on our communities. Communication, cooperation, collaboration and commitment will be the key components to the success of this plan. And now Chief Skinner will conclude this presentation.
Once all of the partner councils have reviewed, approved and adopted the plan through resolution, then the implementation plan can be put into action. The last of the presentations to individual councils happens on May twenty fifth. And assuming all adopt the plan, then the next steps will be to one, convene the partnership council and formalize the implementation plan in terms of reference. Two, identify action groups and inventory their individual mandates, composition, priorities, goals, objectives and accomplishments to date. Three, develop performance measurement and evaluation tools for the purposes of focus and report back. And four, and most importantly, establish a communication strategy to publicly introduce the plan. Just a couple of final thoughts before opening it up to questions. I want to commend Tracy and her team from DPRA for being able to complete this plan during a pandemic. I don't know if any of us truly appreciate the challenges that our team faced in engaging the public and key stakeholders during a period of community lockdowns, video conferencing. And competing priorities for municipal and corporate leaders. Thank you, Tracy, to you and your team. I also want to, I also want to congratulate the county on the commitment of your staff throughout this process. We recognize that each municipality has its individual needs and in no way, shape or form is this plan an attempt to impose its priorities on any one community. This is not a zero-sum game. This is about bringing people and committees together to understand the diverse issues, broaden the impact of successes already achieved. And leverage the knowledge and commitment of existing committees. And in so doing, provide you as elected representatives with the information you need to satisfy yourselves and your constituents. That progress is being made to make your communities safer and enhance your community members' quality of life. So thank you for the opportunity to present today, and if there are any questions, our team would be happy to take them.
Okay, uh, thanks, Chief Skinner and David and Kim. Questions from council for any of the people. Who have made presentations today. Unexpected, oh, there's Counselor Hurley.
And no good there. I made this comment at Perth East the other night. One bit concern I have is a transit system, what do we, you know, we're how many months into our transit system, we've collected fifty eight hundred dollars. And that's, that's collecting some interesting data there too, and it tells us where we are getting traffic and even if, you know, take COVID out, say we did a double folder, triple folder. How many people were on there? We're still really getting a taste here of what some of these programs are going to cost to run. I think that's in mind and part of the approach for sure. Interesting times for many people these days, you know. Most successful businesses right now struggling. And twenty years, I'm being told financially in a year and a half, two years. Lost their health, so it's interesting for sure, but some great work there. No, thank you.
Questions? Takes me a minute to scan the whole screen here. I'm not seeing any hands up or. Anything, so anyway, uh, thank you very much, uh. Chief Skinner and Mr. Cinco and Kim. And uh. Great presentation and uh. I'm sure we'll get some traction after your, is it May twenty fifth, your last presentation, I think you said? Okay. Perfect. So I have a motion here that Perth County Council receives the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan presentation for information. Move by. Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Wright. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Perfect. We're gonna move on here. And I believe we need Sean to. Come aboard here now. Then as soon as we get, there we go. Oh, there's Sean. Morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so we have the application for modification of draft plan of subdivision. And I'll let you take it away.
Thank you and good morning, Warden Hagenton, members of Perth County Council. Thank you and good morning, Warden H. Richardson, members of Perth County Council. I hope everyone is doing great this morning. The County of Perth Planning Department is in receipt of an application for a request for a modification. To a phase three of the Emerald Green draft approved. Plan subdivision identified as Plan thirty one T dash nine one zero zero two. The proposed modification to the Emerald Green subdivision mainly applies to Gilmer Crescent. Which is an existing road established in the phase two of the development. Now, I do apologize as normally I would, I'd like to have a couple of slides to kind of illustrate this, but I am a little new with the county process. So I didn't get anything prepared for this specific meeting. But essentially, the modification extends Gilmer Crescent northward. Through the phase three development lands to the northerly limit of the property. And to the mutual property boundary with the Listul Golf Club. The modification proposes a road stub at the north end of Gilmer Crescent. In anticipation of potential future development on the adjoining lands. Now, it should be noted that the Listul Golf Club are lands which are also owned by the applicant. Gilmer Crescent currently extends from Rogers Road to the boundary of the phase three lands. And contains eighteen lots with existing single family dwellings. Because of this existing community and the nature of the proposed modification. Planning staff hosted a public information session. Which was held on April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one at a special North Perth Council meeting. The public information session was an opportunity to provide North Perth Council with information regarding the modification. And a forum to allow residents to express concerns and ask questions about the proposed modification. The meeting was also an opportunity for the applicant to present the modification request. Three members of the public registered ahead of this meeting to provide verbal comments. With staff also receiving one letter correspondence from a resident of Gilmer Crescent. This letter was included in the staff report package for council. The future impact to the area traffic as a result of this modification was the most noted concern. Additionally, several members expressed dissatisfaction with the alteration of Gilmer Crescent. From a crescent to a through road that is an avenue. Currently, Gilmer Crescent is not intended to continue northward and the draft approved plan has Gilmer Crescent transitioning into Bridge Court. And ultimately terminating at a cul-de-sac. The proposed modification, however, meets the intent of the provincial policy statement and conforms to the County of Perth official plan and to the. To the Listul Ward official plan as noted in the staff report. The proposed modification provides a link between the existing development and any potential future development. This connection will provide an efficient access between the existing residential neighborhood. And any future residential neighborhood on the adjoining lands should they be developed. The Listul Ward official plan encourages future road connections within and between residential developments. This potential road connection represents good planning as it avoids residential lands from becoming isolated. And avoids the looping and lollypopping of streets, which is essentially the quartz and the crescents that we commonly see. This creates a less cohesive community and creates disconnects from the town and between neighborhoods. Characteristically, this also represents an efficient use of infrastructure. That is roads, water services, wastewater services, et cetera. And the future connection maintains a municipally owned corridor to the adjacent lands should they be developed in the future. Immediately following an approval of this modification. The impact will be negligible as it is essentially just a road stub with no additional traffic flow. If the golf course lands are developed in the future, additional traffic impact assessment will be required as part of the development review and justification. It is the opinion of staff that the proposed modification represents good planning. A similar staff report was presented to North Perth Council on May tenth, two thousand twenty one with North Perth Council. Supporting the staff recommendation, which was to recommend Perth County Council approve the application. As such, staff recommends that the County of Perth Council approve the application for a modification. To the draft approved conditions by GSP group. I should note that as a result of this process, notice of decision or appeal is not granted to the general public. Or more specifically, would not include members of the immediate community to the subject property. There is no requirement for public consultation meeting to discuss the proposed changes. However, the decision on whether or not to change the draft plan conditions. Will need to be made by this county council at a regular scheduled meeting open to the public similar to today's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, we do now have. The map up on the screen there for your reference, although we do have it in our package. If I could go back to full screen, then I can see if we have questions. Would be nice. There we go. Perfect. Now, questions for Sean on this. Plan change of subdivision. Councillor McDermott.
Uh, yeah, the golf course, is it still being used? Like, is it still, if we were open, would it still be in use?
Yes, thank you for the question. So the golf club is still active and it is still being used. At this time, yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councillor Agus.
My question isn't totally on the roads. My question is about the kind of houses that are going into this. Plan of subdivision, they're all low density. And the Listul official plan says it promotes a wide use of housing. So I think that to do the next phase that you should go back to the developer and ask him. To change some of the housing that he put in some multi rez residents in here and not just the hundred and seventy one. Single family housing. I would like that we defer this until that can be explored and looked into. It is a possibility. We did it in Perth East in a third phase of one of our subdivisions. We had the developer change the type of housing that was going in.
Comments, John?
So this is a draft approved plan, which is historic. And so, yes, it is predominantly low density. I mean, they've met everything in their conditions to move this forward. That's what I'm bringing, presenting to you guys tonight, which you guys choose to do. That's up to council essentially.
Other comments or questions? Councillor, right?
Would there ever be a better consideration of, I believe it's Roger Street? Going right along, I believe, I believe the back of Ideal Supply is right there. Roger Street continuing on to make a better outlet access. I know we have an LPAD appeal, I believe it's on the little parcel of land here at the. At the northeast corner of this map I'm looking at. So is there any considerations of Roger Street going further north? East to meet up with the street that comes from, I don't know, Kong Skill? I can't, I need a bigger map. I can get one, hold on. Got another computer? Somebody can answer that.
So, well, I think if I understand the question correctly. So again, not at this time, I mean, whether they've thought about it or not, I'm not sure. But according to their plan, it is contemplated to curve over and then meet up with Gilmer. There is a woodlot feature there and that's what I'm assuming they, why they didn't want to connect it. But I can't speak on their behalf in that regard.
Other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. You got your question answered, councillor, right? Or you're still looking?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I know if, if they're going to save the woodlot, I know when we had that other discussion about the lands behind or beside Ideal Supply, the Catholic Church. A lot of people are going to be coming out McDonald Street, very bottlenecked. The streets in that area, just the way I guess it was planned and set up years ago. If they do tear out the golf course and build, then they would definitely have better. Outlet access somewhere along the line. Maybe they do a massive, I don't know what the golf course plan is, no idea. Multi residential, higher density apartment buildings or something. I, but I'm just looking at another map. I'm good.
Okay, last chance for questions or comments. Councillor Callum.
Yes, through you, Warden, and all good comments from everyone tonight. And Sean, you had a very, very thorough presentation. This has been, I cannot speak on behalf of what is beside Ideal Supply in the Catholic Church as it's pecuniary interest to me, their councillor, right? But I think what we have done is we created a plan just to start this stub. I am not in favor of deferring this project. I would like to see it move forward this morning. And again, the planner and the developer have their i's dotted and t's crossed. And I believe we should move forward with this project. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I do have. Councillor Agus.
She's dark. I understand what Doug is saying, but I would like to make a motion that we move for deferral. So that they can go back and talk to the developer and look into some other kinds of housing. If we allow the road to go through, then he's not going to even entertain the. The idea that it could be done. So I think that it should be deferred. I'd like to move that.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Let this be deferred. In order to proceed on that, I would need a secondar. Councillor Hurlick. So the motion is, and I'll paraphrase this hopefully correctly, councillor Agus. Did you want this deferred to go back to the developer? To see more. Variety of housing in this? Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Both you want, you want some multi residential in there?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a mover and a secondar. Last chance for comments and I'll bring that one to a vote. Oh, Councillor McKenzie.
It's just maybe wordsmithing as much as anything, Jim, but maybe just. Comment about maybe just higher density in the area. I think that's what we're trying to achieve as much as a variety of housing options. Maybe just say a higher density and that would leave it up to the developer to, to play with the numbers.
Okay, yeah, that's actually good wordsmithing. Thanks, Councillor McKenzie. Councillor Casenberg.
I want to take the opportunity to remind County Council that this is an approved plan of subdivision and they're asking for a small variation. This plan has been on the files for quite a while. Sean, maybe you can tell us the length or duration that this has been around. And the developer could choose to abandon this particular change, which as Sean indicated, is in the interests of good planning. And just go ahead and build as they were because it's been approved. I know that that approval came some time ago. Now we have different sensitivities that happens often enough, but at this time, I think trying to push the developer. Towards a higher density in this is a fool's errand. And as I said, they could just pull the plug on this particular request for amendment and build as it is. So I think we're barking down the wrong road to consider deferral at this point.
Okay, councillor Agus.
Well, the subdivision that we had in Perth East was the same way. It was on the books for twenty years. And the developer developed the first two phases. And our planner of the day, Adam Betridge, went to him before the third phase. And he said that we would, Perth East would like a variety of houses. And that's what our developer did. So I think the developer should realize that this is what the municipalities need. We've talked about this around and around the table. We talk about affordable housing all the time. And to me, this is not affordable housing when you're putting all single developments in a subdivision.
Okay, last chance for comments again. We have our manager of planning, Sally, on the screen. Would you like to make any comments before I bring this to a vote?
Thank you, Warden H. Richardson. I, I think the comments from the different councillors have been received by staff. The. It is, it is a historic subdivision, nineteen ninety three, I believe. Approved by the Ministry of, Ministry of Municipal Affairs perhaps at the time. And the experience in Perth East is one of success, certainly. Where twelve units were changed from singles into semis. And that developer certainly was engaged and interested in that, that change at the time. There was several modifications going on in that subdivision. With respect to different blocks and road stubs as well. And a, and a pathway for pedestrian access. It's not, I guess my thoughts are. It's not that we can't go back and have that conversation with them. And it's not that we shouldn't let them proceed as it is. These are old subdivisions. We have final phases in place. This, this could go, you know, the conversation could go either way and it would. Would not change the process. It would change the time that this developer is, has the timeline that they have in place. It might not be successful. They may not choose to do that. I think. We don't have the teeth in our official plan to force. The density now, we have a target. We don't have a, we don't have a. We have a, we have a target that's described in words, not in numbers, I guess, is a good way to put it. Rather than us saying we are striving for a percentage of different housing types. Or we are striving for a percentage of affordability. We don't have those numbers in our current OP. Of course, they will, they will be in our new OP, but we are not there yet. And so we don't have the teeth. We have an opportunity perhaps to go and have a conversation and negotiate. But perhaps our position isn't super strong. And. I think. We did have a success story in Perth East. We can't say for sure that would unfold the same here. So, I mean, staff are happy to go whichever direction this council chooses, certainly. And I would suggest that. It would, success for additional units in this, in this case, in every case. Would rely on really willingness of folks to go there because we don't have the teeth at the moment. And. I think. What we have learned over the last year and a half or two years perhaps is that density in itself does not equal affordability. It is a much better efficient use of land and services. And in and of itself, it's not helping us as a community achieve our goal of affordability and attainability. And we have a lot, we have more work to do there and we have, we have to. We have to build partnerships and different strategies to make that happen. It's not a something planning alone consult, to be quite honest, but, but I do think. Certainly higher density or different housing types being available. I mean, that helps a community, there's no doubt. And it certainly is a more efficient use of land. And at the same time, this is a historic subdivision with one face to go. So it's really the willingness of council to go one way or the other and staff will implement.
Okay, thanks, Sally. Okay, so the motion's on the floor. It's been moved in second. Councillor Callum?
Okay, thank you and thanks for speaking there, Sally. So even though this is a live streamed meeting. I would ask for a recorded vote on this decision. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a request to record a vote. So Tyler? I will let you. So we have a request to record a vote. So Tyler, I will let you handle that.
Excellent. So through the warden, I will go through the names of council. If you could reply with yea or nay as your response, that'd be great. Counselor Wright?
Nay.
Counselor Callum?
Nay.
Counselor McDermott?
Yes.
Counselor Wilhelm?
Nay.
Counselor Kasonberg?
Nay.
Counselor McKenzie?
Nay.
Warden Heskey?
Nay.
So that would be defeated on a recorded
Oh, you forgot, Counselor Aggins. Enough numbers. We've missed somebody.
Arrow and I did not vote.
Sorry, I apologize. Counselor Hurlick?
Yes.
And Counselor Aggins?
Yes.
That's still a defeat.
So that's defeated on a recorded vote of 10 to 6.
And that's based on the weighted portion?
Correct.
Okay. So that's defeated 10 to 6, and that's on actual weighted numbers there, just so you realize the numbers don't add up to the faces. And so I also have a motion here that Perth County Council receives the application for modification of draft plan of subdivision approval by GSP Group on behalf of 2244278 Ontario Inc., Emerald Green Draft Plan of Subdivision 3 331T91002, report for information. And Perth County Council approved the application for the modification to the draft approved conditions by GSP Group on behalf of 2244278 Ontario Inc., Emerald Green Draft Plan of Subdivision Phase 3, 31T-91002, affecting property described as part lot 26th and 27th, concession one, Gilmer Crescent, Listowel Ward, municipality of North Perth. And Perth County Council revised condition number one of the draft plan approval for subdivision application number 31T-92002 by 2244278 Ontario Inc., also known as Emerald Green Subdivision, affecting property described as part lots 26th and 27th, concession one, former Wallace Township, and form town of Listowel, now in Listowel Ward, to read as follows, that the approval applies to the draft plan prepared by GSP Group dated as being last modified April 29, 2021, which shows a total of 124 lots, nine blocks, and six streets that each phase of this plan can proceed to the final approval at separate times from each other. Moved by Counselor Callum. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Casenberg. Okay, last chance for questions or comments on that one. Those in favor? That is approved. Had to do some counting. Okay, that takes care of that. We'll move on. Thanks, Sean, and thanks, Sally. I guess that goes to show we need to get the official plan updated sooner. Okay. Now we are going to move on to economic development, and first we have Maggie and the PC Connect update. Morning, Maggie.
Morning, everyone.
You're good to go.
Amazing. Thank you. So I'd just like to provide a brief summary of our monthly PC Connect update report that is before you all. So as always, we do continue to operate responsibly through the stay-at-home order, and we're encouraging residents to use the service for essential travel only at this time. So we are working to educate riders on what essential travel is through our organic social media channels. So for example, to access groceries, prescriptions, healthcare, and/or work that cannot be done remotely. So all of our COVID-19 safety precautions continue to be enforced, and they will remain in effect for the foreseeable future. So in terms of PC Connect and providing access to the vaccination clinics, we do currently provide a connection on both routes to the Stratford Rotary Complex through Stratford Transit. So unfortunately, in order to provide direct access to the clinics with minimal waiting times, significant reconfigurations would be required. We were further investigating a separate vaccination shuttle that would be dedicated solely to providing round trips to each clinic, aside from PC Connect. However, it was recently deemed non-feasible. So because of our clientele that are dependent on the service on a daily basis to access their essential needs, we do highly recommend against making any changes and continue to encourage riders to leverage the connections that are currently in place. So our ridership has decreased by approximately 20% in April compared to March, which is likely to be attributed to the stay-at-home order that was put into place on April 8. So in the month of April, PC Connect serviced 135 rides on Route A and 11 on Route B for a monthly total of 146. So to date, PC Connect ridership is trending at an average increase of 42% month over month, which is with little to no marketing efforts. So unfortunately, with the current landscape and extended stay-at-home order, we do continue to be in a holding pattern in terms of marketing and advertising. So we are certainly looking forward to the time for when it's safe and responsible to resume these efforts so that we continue building this growth trend. On behalf of the SCT Association, the city of Stratford has released a joint RFP for a digital transit booking application and web platform that will assist the provision of our service. So the closing of the proposal was extended to June 2. However, the target date to award the chosen applicant remains to be June 14. So once the evaluation process is complete, each municipality will either, that choose to proceed will enter into their own agreement with the provider. So we are confident that an online app will be a great asset to our service, as it'll enhance both the booking and the payment process for our riders. So we're definitely looking forward to having this implemented as early as this summer. So that does conclude my very brief update for PC Connect, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Maggie. Do we have any questions for Maggie with regards to her report? Just scanning here, Megan. Looks like you're going to get off easy. I don't see any hands up. A quick question for you, though. So you and I talked over a month ago about some federal money they were announcing. Have we ever got any update on that? Nothing?
No, still haven't heard anything regarding that funding.
So that's one of those usual, they announce lots of funding, but it never going to go anywhere? Is that what I'm thinking?
Sounds like it might be the case, unfortunately.
Okay, just checking. Be nice to get some information because there was a comment made earlier about PC Connect and providing rural transportation and lack of revenue versus cost of the service. So at some point in time, there's going to have to be some changes, some way, shape, or form. And I realize this isn't a good time to judge it, but hopefully, once the pandemic gets closer to over, things will really pick up. Anyway, no questions or comments for Maggie? Okay, I have a motion. The county council receives a PC Connect April update report for information. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Gary, thanks, Maggie.
Thank you very much.
And we're going to move on, and I believe Justin's up next. And that is regards to our survey.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, Warden Heskey, members of county council.
You're good to go.
Excellent, thank you. So including your council package as an informational report for county council on our most recent survey of businesses to gauge the ongoing impact of COVID-19 on their operations. As with its previous two surveys, this was conducted in conjunction with Invest Stratford. The report outlines the context around each of the previous surveys, the first being conducted just as the pandemic was declared and the initial state of emergency. The second survey was conducted after many of the major government supports had been announced, and money was flowing to both businesses and individuals. And the third survey, just prior to the most recent stay-at-home order. So it's important to note that in the period between the second and third survey, we did, it was a fairly significant gap. We did remain connected to our business community through a number of other initiatives and programs, including a telephone check-in program that we launched at the end of 2020, as well as our regular consultation that we do with business is through our economic development communities, committees, I should say, as well as just our, conducting our programming. So we had conducted the telephone calls in the end of 2020. Chose that option as opposed to another survey, just because at that time we were hearing from businesses that there was quite a bit of survey fatigue. And that's why we chose the telephone route, and we'll likely implement a similar program, given the responses from the current survey. So including the previous survey results and the reports, just for reference. But just note that it is difficult to compare really any of the surveys as a kind of trend over time because they're each an individual snapshot of a COVID reality that was in place when they were conducted. And then finally, that although the stay-at-home order was issued shortly after the launch of our survey, our third survey, we decided to keep the survey open as an open communication channel and to see if there was anything that we're missing. So I think in terms of, you know, statistically significantly comparing surveys or even looking at this survey, it's very difficult to do based on, you know, the rapid and, you know, the issue, so the stay-at-home order kind of mid-survey. But we did want to keep the survey open to just find out if there was something that businesses were feeling some pinch points that we weren't otherwise aware of. So in terms of the survey results, they do point to the fact that many of the business realities that we were anticipating we would hear about in terms of the significant impact the pandemic continues to have on both direct impacts that businesses have been forced to close, reduce operations, lay off staff, but also that indirect impact. So some businesses that we had heard, you know, they were not forced to close, the example maybe being some accommodation providers, but really their, their customer base and their demand had been significantly impacted by the fact that other businesses were closed and not bringing resident, bringing visitors to the area. So the survey both highlights the, the direct and indirect impacts of the current closure and the ongoing impact of the pandemic. I would say that the announcement of the opening of a tourism support grant last weekend after actually drafting this report is a, is a significant, I think, point of concern that we heard from businesses wrote, especially those businesses in the tourism and accommodation sectors who had been left out of the small business support grant. The announcement of this program a few months ago, and then the very welcome announcement of the opening of the application portal, I think would help to ease a lot of the concerns that businesses were feeling and expressed in the survey. So I think we might get a different result if we were to survey even this week compared to the beginning of last week. I think it is important to note that, that, you know, the advocacy efforts of our partners in Stratford and St. Mary's through our, our our previous engagement with the, those accommodation providers and had been successful, and we were very pleased to see that opening of that portal last week for their support because we did notice that, you know, grant and loan support continues to be a high priority for businesses. So in conclusion, I, I might say that there weren't a lot of surprises in terms of what we were hearing from businesses, programs that were accessed. You know, businesses that had applied for programs were generally successful. There wasn't some undue barriers that we were seeing from our survey results in terms of businesses not being successful. We did see some businesses, some higher levels of businesses being unaware of support programs, primarily some of the more targeted approach, targeted support programs. That's something we're definitely looking to, to understand a bit more is, you know, the, the well-publicized programs are being accessed and being accessed fairly easily, but there may be some more targeted support program that businesses may not be aware of, and you want to make sure that we're ensuring that, you know, eligible, eligible businesses aren't taking advantage of programs. So in conclusion, I just wanted to, you know, I think I mentioned that there wasn't anything really significant in standing here in terms of things we weren't expecting to see, which I I suppose is, is an observation in itself in terms of we're not, you know, it's not some burning underlying issue that we're not aware of. And we do, as I mentioned, look forward to do some more analysis in terms of some of those specific programs that aren't being accessed or not known about, that make sure that we can get that information out to the business community. And then just in conclusion, I think, as I mentioned off this, off the top as well, you know, the survey responses were quite a bit lower this time around versus the previous two rounds. I think we can attribute some of that to some survey fatigue. And I do anticipate launching another round of telephone check-in calls with businesses as we kind of enter that more focused and sustained recovery response. So I will, I will leave it at that and welcome any questions from council.
Thank you, Justin. Questions for Justin from council? Counselor Hurlick?
Oh, thanks, Justin. Yeah, no, people are fatigued in many ways these days. Great work compiling the data. Numbers. If you would. Too many ground work as well. People talk with me. Interesting times, that's for sure. This methodology sends me daily behind COVID. It's, it's anyways, thank you, and I'll leave it at that.
Questions? Comments? I got one quick comment for you, Justin. So in my meeting last Friday with a bunch of the provincial people that we have about every Friday or every other Friday, there was discussion around to grant some loan applications that the business can apply for. So the one thing they pointed out, there's still lots of money there. The, what they're doing right now is they're being, how would I word this, more diligent in the processing of those applications to make sure they actually are legitimate and qualified. So anybody that has applied and maybe hasn't got the money back yet, they probably will be. It's just going to take a little bit longer. They were finding there was some applications that necessarily were slightly off kilt. So they're actually, they're actually processing them virtually by hand now instead of just mass processing. So they will get responses back. It's just going to take a little bit longer. Just in case somebody phones and asks you about that. Anything else? Not seeing anything. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives a COVID-19 in Perth County measuring the ongoing impact on business survey report for information. Moved by Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Wright. Those in favor? Gary, thank you very much. And we will move on to corporate services. And that would be our tree inspectors' report. Tyler, you're doing that?
Yes, sir. So through the warden, the report before council today is the April 2021 Forestry Inspector Report provided by Marvin Smith, the forestry inspector. Just to note that there were eight inspections as a response to the submission of a notice in 10. If there's any questions, concerns, please feel free to let me know, and I will pass the line to Marvin.
Okay. Questions? Not seeing any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the April 2021 Forestry Inspector's Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? Gary, thank you very much. And actually, I'm going to slightly backtrack before we go to the capital of operating variance. So we did have the report back from Justin on the business impacts and whatnot. In previous surveys, we have forwarded them on to Western and Teral Wardens and different entities who might be interested in those results. Would council be in favor of doing that again? I'm seeing, put your hand up if you're a no. Put it that way. I'm seeing, uh, put your hand up if you're a no, put it that way. I have no, no hands, so we will forward that on to Western Ontario wardens and perhaps, uh. Some of the provincial people that would be interested in those numbers. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, we have capital and operating variance. And that would be Corey, I believe. Corey's gonna be extremely optimistic today because his leaves are in the playoffs.
And he's. Yes, yes, they start tonight. So, um, thank you, warden and council. Um, what you have in front of you is your Q one capital variance report. Um, basically, we're at twenty-five percent of the year, and as you see there on the uh one attachment. Uh, showing about expenditures of about eleven point two million dollars. Based on our budget is about twenty-five percent. Um, you also noticed that in the winter maintenance area, which is another attachment in the report. That we uh used about fifty-five percent of our winter maintenance for the first quarter of the year. Uh, remains forty-five percent, forty, forty-five percent left. Which is we're trending to be on budget for winter maintenance as well. Um, you also have the attachment with related to the cover projects for twenty twenty-one. Uh, not a lot with cover projects, uh, significant road projects will start to begin uh in the next coming uh couple of months. Uh, if there's any other questions related to the report, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions for Corey? Not seeing any. Thanks, Corey. Uh, I have a motion here that. County council receives the Q one capital and operating variance report for information moved by. Counselor Kellum, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Gary, thanks, Corey.
No problem.
Okay, we're gonna move on again. You got nothing else, Corey?
Nothing else.
Okay, perfect. Next, council reports. Does any of the counselors have anything? They want to bring up on council reports? Not seeing any hands. Well, I got something here. That I'm gonna read out. Uh, so this last month has been a busy month, and at this point in time, I want to take a moment to acknowledge. Uh, some recognition weeks that have taken place in the month of May. And they haven't just completely worked around our council meetings, so we're kind of doing them all at once. So last week, May ninth to the fifteenth, was the National Economic Development Week. And the Economic Development Tourism Division works hard to promote the economic well-being. And quality of life for communities across Perth County, and this work is being done in a variety of ways, and some of you got reports on this morning. Uh, you know, we're creating jobs through business retention expansion, attracting new business. Working to retain youth, promoting attractions. And assets in our community enduring COVID nineteen, economic development has worked hard to create. Support for our business community through a wide range of programs and promotions. So I would like to acknowledge the Economic Development Department at this point in time. So that was last week. So this week is the National Public Works Week. And uh, public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services. That are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities. And to the public health, high quality and well-being of people in Perth County. And our public works teams looks after about four hundred ninety-two kilometers of roads and a hundred and fourteen bridges. Across the region and without. Their workforce, we would not have safer roads on which to travel in all four seasons. And in addition, our facility staffs help keeps the lights and the doors, lights on, the doors open. So we can provide excellent customer service to the residents, business, and visitors of Perth County. The staff has worked diligently to be good stewards of the county assets. And resources through diligent maintenance. And upholding a fiscal responsible procurement practices. And believe it or not, we got one more. Because next week, May twenty-third to twenty-ninth. Is a very important week as well. It's the National Paramedic Service Week. And our paramedic services team works hard to serve the communities of Perth County each day. These dedicated professionals have stepped up to the plate for our region in COVID nineteen, going over and above their typical duties. And that is included law, support to long-term care, retirement homes, COVID testing, vaccine clinic support. And transferring COVID patients as required. The community paramedicine program has continued to be a positive impact to vulnerable people in our region. By working to bridge the gaps that exist in healthcare. And just further to that, we actually received a really nice letter. From a resident who was, uh, their parent was receiving help through paramedicine. And it was probably one of the nicest letters I've read that I've ever received. You usually don't get letters like that, but it was great. So I want to, on behalf of the county council, thank the teams of paramedic services. Public Works and Economic Development. For their hard work that they perform each day. And considering how challenging the last fifteen months has been for all three of those. I think they've done a great job. Anyway, I just wanted to read that and acknowledge that. Anybody have anything else? Not seeing enough bylaws. We don't have any bylaws today. Something's wrong. Okay, notice of motion. Counselor I had brought this up at the last meeting. With regards to COVID nineteen vaccine production and capacity. And you received the notice of motion in your package. Counselor I, how do you, would you want to just speak to that for a second here, or a minute or two?
I'd love to speak to it. I brought it up because I think, uh, we rely too much. Obviously, we should be more of a. Buy Canadian, build Canadian, be Canadian. Um, I I did think after some consultation with some smarter people than me. That maybe we should, I don't know if we can expand, maybe we should be looking at all the vaccines. I don't know what's all produced in Canada. To be honest with you, I I concentrated on the COVID booster shot mostly. But other vaccines, um, it would have been nice to have, I wish I would have contacted the health unit. To see what other ones are done here, but I would still, it says at the bottom there that, uh, and support domestic vaccine capacity. So that can be taken as. The mumps vaccine, the the measles vaccine too. But I just, I wanna. Thank everybody for putting, I want to thank Tyler for helping me write it. So that's all I've got to say.
Okay, so you're moving that. So do I have a second to this motion? That would be Counselor Kellum. Or just about any face in the screen, that one up pretty quick. So you've all got the motion, you've all seen it. It's been in your package. I have a mover and a second here. Those in favor of that motion to support. Domestic vaccine capacity. And that would be unanimous. Perfect. Okay. Moving on. Other business. Anybody have anything to bring up in other business? Not seeing anything. Announcements. Not seeing anything. So we have a closed session. With dealing with a matter pertaining to labor relations and negotiations and a second item. A matter pertaining to labor relations and negotiations. So I need a motion to go into closed session at ten eighteen. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, that's perfect. So we're gonna go in closed session, and we're gonna need about five minutes to de-stream and. A few things, so five minutes and we'll be back at it. We only got two little things to clear up here, so we're back recording. And I have bylaw number three, eight, two, three, dash, two, oh, two, one, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council. Of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting. Held May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one is ready first, second. And third time. And passed May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Moved by. Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Hurlick. Those in favor? It's Carrie. Thank you. And the last item on the agenda is that the council meeting be adjourned at. Ten thirty-seven. Moved by. Counselor Wilhelm, second by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? Scary, unanimous. Thank you very much.